I think the most expensive thing she sells is like five dollars. Or she raises money to her charity group. So people donate stuff and then she sells it and all the money goes to her youth, the youth group.
You all ready?
Yeah.
Call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, June twenty fourth, twenty twenty one meeting to order. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood?
Here.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone here to the meeting. From River Street on our broadband plan presentation, so without further ado, I'll turn it over to you guys.
All right, can you hear me all right? Is my mic on? Okay. Uh, my name's Robert Taylor. I'm the Business Development Manager for River Street. I'm out of the Danville office with me today. He's also Lon Welchel. He's with River Street as well, and he's out of the Richmond office. And our boss, Greg Coltrane, who's the VP of Business Development, and he's out of Bellhaven, North Carolina. You guys can hear me? Okay. So, um, we've gone over part of this presentation before, but I understand there were some questions, so I'm going to go through it again. Some of the items I'll just highlight, but we'll go in more details on the actual broadband expansion plan. So again, River Street is a wholly owned subsidiary of Wilkes Telephone Membership Cooperative, which is out of Wilkesboro, North Carolina. We've got about two hundred and twenty employees, six sixty million in annual revenues, a little bit over a hundred and seventy million in assets. All right, we have operations in North Carolina, Virginia, South Carolina, Georgia, and Tennessee. Here's a map showing where our current operations are going. The ones closest to you would be King and Queen County. We're in the process right now. Uh, King and Queen County, we manage a wireless network for them, have been for quite some time, from a previous company that we purchased a couple of years ago called Gamewood Technology Group. We're in the process of migrating them over to a total fiber to the home build, and we'll discuss how we're doing that in, uh, here in a little bit in follow-on slides. So, uh, some of the terms to keep in mind is a reverse auction. Uh, that's where, um, there is a amount of revenue or money out there from the federal government to provide services for broadband. And what they do is they offer X amount of dollars, uh, and you have companies who bid on that saying that they would be willing to provide broadband in that area for those X amount of dollars. And then they'll drop it down a percentage, and you go back and see who's still there. And they keep dropping it down and dropping it down until they get the lowest number, and they have nobody else competing for that amount of revenue. So the FCC CAF two, that was a reverse auction. Uh, in this area, there were no CAF two blocks that I know of, but in the follow-on round, which was called ARDOF, Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, there were blocks in New Kent County for funding for the federal government to build broadband, and we'll discuss that here in a little bit. When you're looking at broadband, we define broadband, or the federal government defines broadband as twenty-five and three, that's twenty-five megs down, three megs up. If you're think, if you're trying to figure out, well, how much is twenty-five megs? If you're streaming a standard television channel, you're using about four megs. If you're streaming a high-definition TV channel, you're using about ten megs. And if you're streaming a four K TV channel, you're streaming almost twenty-five megs. So right now, the current definition just about covers a four K stream, okay? That's why if you look at the current federal guidelines, they're looking at nowadays a hundred slash a hundred, that's a hundred megs down, a hundred megs up. So when we look at the reverse auction, they were done off of census block groups. And a census block is just a minimum geographical area that is funded according to the federal government. When we talk about locations, we're talking about homes and businesses. And then one of the other things we'll talk about is VADI, which is the Virginia Telecommunication Infrastructure Group, uh, through the Department of Housing and Community Development. So when we look at New Kent County, um, these are the following companies that provide services according to the FCC that have greater than twenty-five and three service in the county. You have a straight-up net, they do a fixed wireless, they're saying they're providing a hundred megs down and fifty megs up. You have Cox Communications, Verizon, Comcast, and you also have Cox under cable as well as fiber. Here's a map showing the number of, uh, of companies in these different census blocks, or, or census block groups. So if you look, the darker the shade, the more service providers are in that area. So there are, according to the federal government, there is no area that doesn't have a service provider in there. Now, here's, here's the problem that you have. If, in this room, we're considered one census block, and we're all represent a location, a house or business. And the person all the way at the back there has service, but the rest of us can't get it because she's at the very end of the line. To the federal government, we're all served because one home in our block got it. So when you look at this and you see the map, and you say, well, we don't have a broadband internet issue here in the county, according to the FCC, we're totally covered, we're all served, but that's not the case. All you have to do is have one home or one business in the block served, and it's not the problem of the service providers. It's the way that the reports are generated to the FCC. It's called FCC four seven seven, it's done every six months, and you, you record it based off of not only, um, what services you can provide in that area, but how many locations in that area. And so all they're looking at is, oh, we have one home in this ser, in this census block that had the service of broadband, therefore, everybody in that block is, is being served. Now, yes, sir?
I'm just curious, is that block defined by geography or zip code? How do they define that? Is it close to county lines or is that potential to overlook?
No, so the, the blocks do, do end at county lines, but inside the county, a lot of times, the census blocks are based off of the number of residents in that area. Yeah. Um, so anyway, when we look at ARDOF, the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, and we look at the last auction, the reverse auction there, there were funds available for New Kent County. In the pre, because there was areas in which nobody in that area was reported to the FCC as having at late, at least twenty-five and three service, okay? So when we look at this map, this shows us those blocks, how they were showing up. So the green blocks are the areas that River Street Networks was able to win in the auction, and it passes one thousand one hundred and eighty-three locations. The red blocks are those that were worn, won by SpaceX, all right? Uh, that's Elon Musk's, uh, group, that's the low orbit, uh, Earth satellite, Leo Technology. So that was eighty-nine locations, and then there's another block there, uh, that's thirty-two locations, and that's one by a company called Starry. And we're not sure exactly what Starry's plans are, if they're planning on doing fiber to the home, are they planning on doing a fixed wireless? What are they, whether they gonna plan on doing? So if we look at what we did for your broadband expansion plan, we went in, and hopefully this will, we went in and broke the county up into three areas. Then we, we overlaid in those three areas remotes, those were the electronics, and tied them all together with a fiber ring. That's called the backbone. And then off the fiber ring, you can see we laid in additional fibers based off of a count, based off the number of locations it was passing. And I have this also on a Google Earth to where, when we're done with the, uh, the presentation, I can go in there, we can drill down to it if you want to. And so when you look at it, you wonder why did they run the fibers the way they did? Well, that's because these are the locations on the GI system that you guys provided us, showing us where your homes and businesses were located at. And again, after the presentation, I'll bring up Google Earth and we'll drill down into that, uh, uh, take a closer look.
So you were looking at Google new ops in the county, not just one step per.
We looked at all, all locations, yeah. So looking at it, when you look at all, all locations, here's, here's the layout map. So again, we have the three different sections. Each of those sections, uh, geographically has a, a centralized set of electronics cabinet there for, for the connect the fiber. They're all connected by a ring. You can see, i- it's a little, little difficult to see here, but those, the blue, the, the yellow or the blue, pink, and green areas, that gives you the details by each section. And I'll bring it up later on, if I can, see if I can blow it up, but, uh, the next slide shows the total amount of miles. So you're looking at about, uh, for the backbone, you're looking at just about sixty-seven miles of fiber, all right? On the backbone, you would be passing six hundred and, uh, or two hundred and sixty-nine homes. If you don't connect any customers, right, you don't connect any customers, you're looking at just under three million dollars. If you connect thirty percent of those customers, you're looking at an additional, uh, million or so, so you're like at three point one million dollars. All right? So with River Street, and the reason why we did that with River Street, our policy is, is that we cover the cost of connecting the customers if they're within twelve hundred to two thousand feet of the fiber run, right? That's part of our cost of doing business. So we break it out so you guys understand, you know, what's the cost to put the fiber in, what's the cost to connect the customers? And we, we have here thirty percent, I could tell you with the pandemic, we're seeing higher take rates nowadays. There, there's more, broadband is now seen more as a, a, a utility, not as a luxury anymore, okay? So if we look at the feed, this is, I'm sorry. Uh, sure.
Um, the two hundred and sixty-nine that said homes passed, is that all homes that are within that two thousand feet of that?
Yeah, that's within the, within, just off of that fiber ring, that main fiber.
So two thousand feet around that fiber ring?
Yeah, within, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that we would serve up, so, um, the next group is if you feed off of there. So if you're looking at feeding off from the fiber ring, you have an additional five hundred and sixty, I'm sorry, go to the next one. Five hundred and sixty miles of fiber, you're gonna pass eleven thousand one hundred and forty-three homes. That cost there is twenty-two million dollars, okay? And that's if you don't connect any customers, if you connect customers, then you have an additional about seven million dollars there in connection cost. When you, when you look at it, you say, well, what's the connection cost? Connection cost typically somewhere between two thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars per drop, all right? So if, if you look at the total build, this is what the total build looks like. It's six hundred and twenty-seven miles of fiber, it passes eleven thousand four hundred and twelve homes. It costs twenty-five million dollars to build out. And then if you look at a take ratio of thirty percent, you would connect at least three thousand four hundred and twenty-four homes, and it would be an additional seven million or so dollars there. Any questions so far? Again, I'm gonna go, we'll go into Google Earth, and then we can drill down, uh, more here in a little bit. So in, in addition to that, we took a look at wireless, because you guys wanted us to take a look at wireless as well. So there are some things that you have to keep in mind when you're looking at wireless. One, we have to be able to feed the service to the towers. So we took the fiber ring that we would put in and looked at vertical assets near those that we could light up. And then we looked at other vertical assets from there that we could do a point-to-point microwave shot to give the service, right? If I put a tower in the middle of nowhere, unless I have internet at the base of it, it's not gonna do me any good. I've got it, guys, so I've gotta get internet to the tower before I can rebroadcast it. So few terms, when we talk point-to-point, that is a connection from me to you. Point-to-multi-point is a connection from me to all of you, right? And it's normally done by sector, so I might have a sector that feeds this area, and I have a sector feeds this area, and so on and so forth. But a point-to-point is just between the two of us, normally that's a microwave. So if we, hold on a second. If we look at this, one of the first things we have to do is keep in mind, we have the backbone cost still, so we have about three million dollars there. Now, we also took a look at the existing vertical, vertical assets, and this is what we were able to locate, is, are these, these assets in the area. Now, the other thing you have to keep in mind is that there's, there's a certain amount of wireless signal that you can have in an area before you're causing interference with one another. So you can only have so many towers at certain heights beaming out signals in different directions before you end up saying, wait a second, I, this customer can't hear me because this tower's hitting it, and this tower's hitting it, and it's nulling it out. So you have to be very careful, there's a limited number of frequencies, there's a limited number of bandwidth, so when you look at it, there's a saturation point you'll, you'll reach. And, and according to our wireless engineers, this is your saturation point, all right? So I think it's, Lon, was it twenty-two towers? Twenty-one, so at twenty-one towers, your county is saturated, all right? Now, you might be able to move them around a little bit, but you have to be very careful because if you move it a little bit here, it could impact another location somewhere else. So based off of this, this is what your propagation looks like. So according to the engineers, this is how the signals, now you can see there, there are gaps in there. And it, it's due to either topology or, you know, as far as the terrain or the trees, you have a lot of trees. There's only so much penetration you can get through the trees. Uh, and this is where you run into, if I'm sitting here broadcasting out to, to the table, you know, he might be able to get it, but he can't get it, and she can't get it, but you guys can get it. And the, and the reason why is because unbeknownst to us, that, you know, there's a grove of trees between here and here, but there are open gaps there that allowed the signal to propagate. So when we look at it, there are some assumptions that we have as far as how high can we mount our equipment on these towers? Okay? What frequencies are available that we can use? We, we used what they call CBRS, that's, that's three point six five gigahertz and five gigahertz equipment. The reason why we did that is because off of each sector, I can only talk to so many people at the same time and provide them twenty-five and three service. It's not unlimited, right? I can only, I can only provide twenty-five and three service to so many people at one time, all right? So if we are looking at the customer premise area, where I can locate my antenna at the customer's home to receive that signal and talk back to the tower, and I can only go up twenty feet, you know, on the eaves or on the side of the house or whatever, out of the ten thousand eight hundred and fifty-four locations that we can hit with that twenty-one tower sites, only seven thousand four hundred and ninety-four people can actually get the signal, that's only sixty-nine percent. Now, if we had the ability to go up another forty feet, then that map changes. And where you see those holes, you start getting people who can actually get the service. And then what happens is you go up from sixty-nine percent success to about a ninety-five percent success. Now, let me also iterate this to you. Just because ten thousand three hundred and nineteen people now at sixty feet can see the service, doesn't mean I can feed service to all of them, all right? Again, it's a shared service. I can only, you know, I have bandwidth going to the base, I have different radios, but I can only put so many customers off of each radio sector before that sector's full. So those are other things you have to keep in mind. So when we look at the cost.
What would that percentage be roughly?
Well, depending on the equipment, depending on the equipment, you're looking at a sector being full as, as low as twenty-five customers, okay? So if I have a hundred people who can see me off of this sector, I could still only feed twenty-five of them.
And that's a matter of bandwidth, right?
That is a matter of bandwidth in the technology currently. We're in the process, and that's, and the, the equipment that we're looking at is the, the current equipment out there, but we're in the process actually in-house testing some new equipment that would in, increase that ability. But it's still, even with that new equipment, doesn't mean I could feed all hundred of those.
And when we're talking twenty and sixty feet, we're talking at the customer location?
At the customer premise, yes.
So that means I would have to have a point on my property proximity to the house that you could attach an antenna at sixty feet?
Yeah. Yep.
I knew I should have built a three-story with a tall chimney.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a non-standard install, and, and we're running, we're running in that, to that right now in, in Meade and Dimwitty County, and we have, we have a bucket truck and tree climbers.
And I just want to throw in there too, um, if we went that route, we'd have to look at our zoning ordinance as well, because right now you can only have an antenna up to fifty feet, uh, without having to get a useful.
To me, this doesn't sound very feasible. I mean, I can see what the cost of seven million dollars, and you don't know what, you know, there wasn't put in a sixty-foot antenna in a damn house.
Well, again, so, one, so what we did is when the engineers came back, when the engineers came back and said, you reach your saturation point in New Kent County at twenty-one towers, and you can only feed sixty-nine percent of the population, we said, that's not good enough, what can we do? And they said, well, one of the things you can do is you can elevate the CPE equipment, the, above the standard twenty-foot limit to, you know, sixty-foot. And we said, all right, what's that give us? And they came back and said, that gives us ninety-five percent. So we, we're just letting you know that, I mean, that's, you know, we wanted to make sure we got a majority of the county covered with a wireless signal, and we can do that, but because of the topology, because of all the trees and everything, for people to really benefit from there, you're looking at a lot of non-standard installs.
And I would think at the same time, when you go from twenty feet kind of standard install to sixty feet, you're significantly impacting the cost of installation.
Well, that's why we say that's, that's, that's a non-standard install. We would cover the, cover the cost of a standard install on the wireless, you know? It's part of our operations in-house, but when you're looking at sixty feet, then I gotta get a bucket truck out of it, I gotta get street, uh, tree climber out there. You know, there's, there's an additional cost that would not be covered, so. So this is what, this is what the cost looks like. So not only do you have, you have about sixty-seven miles of fiber that you still need to put in, to put in the backbone, to hit those vertical assets so that you could beam signals point-to-point out to the other towers so that you could get enough penetration and saturation of the area to cover sixty-nine percent at the standard install height of twenty feet. Okay? So you're, you're looking at about seven point five million dollars. So unless you have some questions right now, let me close this down, let me bring up Google Earth, and we can drill down, uh, into it. Hold on a second. Right here? Yeah. All right. So here again is the county, broken up into the, to the sections. And if I take you back through here, what we did in each of these locations, we put a control cabinet. That's where you're gonna house your electronics. Now, one of those would probably be a much larger facility, where the, where it'd be the, the main cabinet, you know? Uh, or a precast building of some sort. The others would be smaller cabinets, all right? And then we would recommend that you connect those via transport fiber, basically a ring. And the reason why we recommend a ring is because if you have a cut along there, the signal will travel in the other direction, right? So if I cut, if I have signals going left and right, and I cut somewhere, the signals that were going right will start going back around the left way. And that way, we have as little disturbance to the network as possible when you have a ring-type configuration. And then after you do that, we start adding in the fibers, and what we would do is the main trunk lines. This is two hundred and eighty-eight strands of fiber, you can see where they're, where they're laying out. Then the two hundred and sixteen strands, the one forty-fours, ninety-six, seventy-twos, forty-eights, all the way down to just a, a twelve-strand fiber. Now, these are fibers that are gonna be along the roadways, okay? And this is where we're saying, if, if you're within twelve hundred, two thousand feet of there, that River Street's practice is to cover the cost to do what we call the drop. That's the connection from that main feed over to the residents and hook them up. And electronics and everything, okay? That's our cost of doing business. So that's why we broke out, that's why we broke out the install fee, or the install cost. So if you look at it, here's the locations.
Do you have a, a, a registration or setup fee for someone that signs up for service?
So right now, right now, we, we do not have a, um, a setup fee, right? And we don't have a current contract requirement for residential customers. We do for businesses, but not for residential customers. So if somebody calls us, you know, they'll, they'll, the customer service person will enter their address in, see if they are along the route that we're currently serving. If they are, they'll give them the pricing options they want. If they wanna sign up for the service, they can sign up, then they create the work order, technician's sent out to hook up the home, and then they're invoiced on a monthly basis after that. So if, if we drill in, uh, into the different areas, you can see like in this, in this area here, i- it looks to me there's a neighborhood. Oh, great. It looks to me that there's a neighborhood here, and that's, we have a high concentration of homes in this area. But at the same time, we have some other homes, so you look and say, well, why is this fiber going all the way here? Because we have a home at the very end of this route.
Would that home be considered standard installation?
Yeah, that one would, yes, because it's, it, even though it's at the end of the, end of the fiber route. And more than likely, this one would too, because we could either feed them, we more than likely feed this one here off, off this run here. So, I mean, I could go in there and check the measurement real quick to see how many, how, uh, how many feet it would be from here. So you're, you're looking at, they're less than a thousand feet, even though it looks pretty far away, they're less than a thousand feet. Sorry. So let me back up, this is, this is the fiber build. We also have same, the same capability, if we go in here, let me just turn all this off real quick. And if we go in here and take a look at the, um. Sorry. I'm going to turn off the remote cabinets. I'm going to turn off the locations. And I'm going to turn off the service boundaries. And then what I'll do, I'm leaving the fiber ring up here. This is what you, coverage-wise, you would get off of five gigahertz. Now, here's the issue. Five gigahertz is, is, uh, unlicensed spectrum. So that means anybody and their brother can have five gigahertz equipment. So you run into an issue where, uh, your neighbor could impact your neighbor with, with the service. Long time ago, when I first got into the business, one of the first things we did was wireless service. Using nine hundred megahertz. And I can't tell you, and this was back in two thousand and three, everybody and their brother used nine, nine hundred megahertz.
Everybody's cordless phone and everything in their home.
Right? Nowadays, fortunately, cell phones, so not many people have cordless phones, but they still do. But baby monitors. The little baby cameras, all those things. And I can't, wireless that, you know, now, back then didn't have Bluetooth, they, but they had wireless headsets. They used nine hundred megahertz. So I can't tell you how many times we had complaints where our customer service was working and then all of a sudden it wasn't working. And we go and find out. Oh, they just installed a baby monitor or somebody just got a tomorrow headset. So when you look at five gigahertz, you have to realize that with five gigahertz, you could have interference issues. The other technology we looked at is CBRS technology. That's what's showing up here in purple. And, and that is, uh, three-six-five. Now. There is licensing available for that spectrum. Right? So you can get that as licensed technology. That would keep the ability of. Somebody from coming in and interfering with you down to a very minimum. So here again is the areas that we cover. And let me turn off this little chart on the side. And then if we turn on. The locations again. And we zoom in. This is where we're going to start seeing that, you know.
Those are all your misses.
Yeah, if you're not covered by purple or green, it's a miss. So again, it looks like to me this person can get it, but their neighbor probably can't. Now, that's it. The, this map is based off of the standard twenty-foot height, right? So it's a possibility this person can't get it, but if we put a sixty-foot antenna there, that person could get it. But thi- this map is showing you at, at the standard height which you have. Are there any questions? Any, anything details?
You don't have any information on people that currently have broadband service, do you? That would show if those misses are being fed by something else currently?
Uh, I think on the, um. On, on the deliverables, did they include a address listing of? I think. Yeah, yeah, we don't have, we don't have that necessarily, but I think there is an address listing that we provide you, i- i- who's getting served. And I, I.
But I think it's based off of the state and year.
Yeah.
You're asking what's being served.
By Cox or somebody else that may be showing as a miss on yours that's already got service.
And so that goes back to the mapping redesign that the FCC is putting together today or this year, hopefully in the next twelve, eighteen months, we're going to see a new map. And, um, and that whole mapping redesign is based on a, uh, project that CostQuest and NTIA did back in two thousand and eighteen. And we actually participated and supplied all the data we could in Virginia for accounts that we had. And they have created a new fabric method that NTIA recommended to the FCC to use moving forward. And so now they're using that method. And that supersedes that four seventy-seven reporting that Rob was talking about earlier. And so we will have new data that will be coming down from the beds, but we don't have that right now.
And is the four seventy-seven information still using the twenty-five or is it a hundred hundred?
Well, right now it's still used as twenty-five and three. Um, i- i- it's interesting that, you know, with the current, uh, uh, funding that's coming down for ARPA. Uh, the treasury in their documentation says that, you know, those, that funding can be used for broadband, but they recommend it be used for services at a minimum of a hundred slash a hundred. Or a hundred slash twenty that can be upgraded to a hundred slash a hundred.
So clarification there, the four seventy-seven report is not, um. It's not dependent upon the twenty-five and three standard. The twenty-five and three standard is a definition of the FCC.
Okay.
The four seventy-seven report is just going to take whatever data the provider says that, that he or. Chief Business, whatever business it is out there is providing, that four seventy-seven report is just going to show what is available in the area or what the customer is purchasing.
Yeah, so what happens with a four seventy-seven report? I've had fun following those. What happens is we, you, we send in by census block. Uh, the following information. We sell it in the census block. We, we provide this internet services, right? Everything from fifty slash fifty to a hundred slash a hundred or twenty-five slash. So we have to give them a listing by census block of what services are provided. And that's, and then by the block as well, we tell them how many customers in that block, residential versus business, have those speeds. So they don't know what addresses are fed, but they just know that who in that block or if anybody in that block has any of those speeds. And so if some, again, if, if so. So say I have, I have service in this block and it's twenty-five and three. I say I can do twenty-five and three. But only, but people only have ten slash one service. Because I've defined that block as being able to get twenty-five and three, it's not going to be provided funding.
But I don't think we, I mean, you said that service, that report won't be out till maybe the end of the eighteen.
The new mapping is, yeah, they're working on around.
But that's going to be, I mean, that's irrelevant in my opinion. I mean, we need to move forward on something. What we're going to do now.
But River Street has a tool that we use in advance to work with our partners. And it's called our Crowd Fiber Tool. And we take that solution and we do joint marketing with our partners. To canvas the entire county and have every citizen in the county go to this site and take. A speed test and give us some detailed information about what they use their internet for, how many devices they have, et cetera. And all of that information gets captured inside of our solution. So that we can come back to you and say, okay, we've identified problematic areas that. Pick up more detail than what you can get from the FCC's maps. So we don't have to wait twelve to eighteen months for a new map to come out. Uh, it does mean that your citizens might get asked multiple times to take surveys to give details to different people. Like they may have already been asked by you to do something in the past. The state body program may initiate a new, uh. Program in the coming months where they ask everybody in the state to go to this site and do the same thing. Uh, the federal government may come back and say, well, we want you to do the same thing. But it would help us along with your project.
Well, it's also, you know, the areas that have DSL and, and, um, in that area, you know, you'd have to do that test fifty times a day because. It just depends on who's online. I mean, I, I've seen stuff downloading in the kilobyte speeds. I mean, it's just. Come back tomorrow, you know, so i- i- it, it really dramatically changes based on who's online at the time, so. And just like it would with wireless.
Right.
There's a little bit more of a complex, um, problem with speed tests. In that the incumbent providers will tell you that a person is not going to get a reading of any faster speed than what they're paying for. So their argument is, is that if the customer's only paying for a twenty-five meg service. They're not going to get a speed faster than that. So it's important for the incumbent to be able to tell what they're capable of providing that customer. So that's where the fabric method that the FCC is looking at will come back. Yes, it will consider what the incumbent says they can provide the customer. It will consider the speed test the customer is actually pulling. It will consider geographic topology and other things that are pulled into that fabric method to determine where customers aren't receiving adequate service. In the meanwhile, the federal treasury has announced that they would like to see. Us move to a one hundred by one hundred symmetrical as the bare minimum for internet. So that could happen as well.
And again, that, I, that kind of gets back to my, what I said earlier. If you're streaming four K, you're basically using twenty-five megs. And there's already eight K on the horizon and we're not quite sure how much that's going to require. So the technologies are already out there outstripping what the current definition of broadband service is.
I, I, I would think that anybody would be looking at a hundred, hundred as a minimum. I mean, bare minimum for just about anything. And not even an option for a business.
Any questions? Any other details you guys want me to go into?
Please feel free to fire away. We would love to. Help get you to where you feel like you want to be about any things about broadband. So it doesn't necessarily have to pertain to this project.
But I assume, are y'all finished? Are y'all finished with the, uh?
It's you, man.
Are y'all finished with the proposal? I mean, the pri- the plan?
Yeah, we're, we're finishing with the presentation. I think there, there's a follow-up that we will have, uh, reports out to you and everything. And then at, at that time, if you want us to come back to dive in to the details of leads, we're available. Or we're available now if you wanted to, you know, to go into more details as well. It's just. We're here to give you a comfort level of, we've looked at the county. Here's what it's going to cost if you want to do a wireless bill and what the repercussions could be there. And here's what it would cost if you wanted to do a private to the home type of, what, what, you know, you would be looking there.
But am I wrong? I assume our next steps would have to be either accepting some unsolicited PP. Or set, sending out a RFP with that proposal to, to move forward if, if, if we consider.
That, that's right. I mean, what we've procured to date is only for the development of the design. Uh, when and if we move to the construction phase, we'll have to procure the construction as well. Which could be an unsolicited PPEA or the county putting out an RFP.
So Mr. Chair, I got a question. So we did the fiber and we did the wireless. But. Because we are rural, wouldn't we need a combination of the two?
Yeah, you could do, I'm sorry. You, we call that a hybrid solution. So you could do a hybrid solution where you say, we're going to go out there and we're going to build. This fiber ring and then we're going to build trunk lines off of here into these areas because we know we have a high concentration. But if we look at it, we could light this tower up over here. In the next six months and get these people service while we're building out these other areas. Or we could get these people service because. It's so cost prohibitive to give them service via fiber because they're so far away. So you could do a hybrid solution. And that's why with your plan, you have the, uh, you have the, the pricing and the information needed to decide. Where's it make the most sense to spend the money now versus where do we need to spend it in the future?
And I think if I'm, sorry, are you done?
So I would think that we would spend the money where the majority. Of our residents would have availability to broadband. I mean, I had the, the little guy running across my screen when I connect. So I, I would think that we would have, um. We would make a decision based on, um, who, or how many people connect to a service that. Uh, God forbid if their kids have to work from home, if their job requires them to be working from home the same day, same time. Um, if their wife or husband is on, um, uh, social media during the time that everybody else is working. We, I think those are realistic scenarios that we have to look at when, um, we are talking about broadband for everyone.
Cause the backbone is required no matter what. I mean, for all practical purposes.
Yes, I mean, because you have to get the bandwidth out there to whatever media, i- if you're going to use wireless media or if you're going to use a fiber media. You have to get the broadband out there.
Because I think, you know, part of the, the, the initiation of this project, other than just we need broadband is, is recognizing that we have. Pockets in New Kent that currently have adequate service. They may not be happy with the provider or whatever the case, the price or whatever the case may be, but they do have access to the service. And I think what really is pushing us now is how can we provide service to those that will not be served by the private sector, period? Um, and, and that's where we are now. We've got, we've got communities. That don't have the density that Cox or Verizon or anybody else is going to go to. And those are the ones that I personally would consider our priority hookup. Get those people. The, the, the difficulty in that is you don't have the density and you have the expense of, of remote hookups and all that, so. Um, but I think that's really the, to me would be the focus of how we move forward is. How can we cover the most people that do not currently have an option?
But for me, in, in agreement with you, but also if you have. An area that they can be connected. However, they're paying twelve, fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars to be connected. That's your wife. Um, to be connected, then, then that's almost like not having it available.
Yeah, and to me, that's kind of the case. I mean, this, it, it, we've all heard the stories of.
I got one right here.
Has it, but, but Cox wants ten thousand dollars to come next door.
Cox is, I mean, I know I have two neighborhood, two sections in my district that they need the twenty-five. Home requirement and they still, I still, we still can't make them go. I'm going to speak to you about that afterwards, Brendan. Time for you to go to court.
And I'm going to help, I'm going to help you go with court.
But my question to you is, do we have enough information so we can set this thing out and? Do RFP?
Yeah.
Or unsolicited?
Yes, sir. I mean, you, you do. I mean, there's enough information and I, I think we're going to have a follow-on discussion with Rodney to get whatever details he needs. To, to do, you know, however you guys want to move forward.
One, one question. Um, and looking at your wireless. Did I hear you write that each site, and you proposed approximately twenty-five sites, but each, twenty-one sites. But each site only has a capacity of twenty-five.
No, no, no. So, so what I was telling you is that some of the equipment, the sectors, right? So if you look, you would put on each tower, you would put four sectors of five gigahertz, four sectors of three-six-five gigahertz. And what I was telling you is that. I know that the current, uh, CBRS three-six-five. On one of their sectors, you can only do about twenty-five customers at twenty-five and three service before you start causing. Customers not to be able to get that service. See what I mean? So you could probably serve more customers, but to get the twenty-five and three, because it's a bandwidth. And you're shared, you can only have so many customers on there simultaneously. Now, on the five gigahertz, you can actually get customers up to fifty slash five. But if you want more customers, you can keep them at the twenty-five and three because then you could get up to fifty of those customers at twenty-five and three on a five giga.
So, and, and my question.
No, I was just going to add to that. You can connect that many people. And we use, um, a calculation to say that this is how many we would suggest to connect. Based on the amount of bandwidth that that one device can serve.
Right.
But the trees and the distance and all of that creates a whole nother issue that you may not be able to give. A customer but twelve because of the obstructions that are between them and that antenna. So wireless is a best effort service. Whereas with fiber, you can guarantee every person that connects to that fiber, one hundred by one hundred or one gig by one gig. But you, you can't do that with the wireless.
And, and it, it appears that our ultimate goal is to wireless to every home in the county.
Fiber.
I mean, fiber. Thank you, thank you. Fiber to every home in the county and the wireless was kind of a, a temporary means until we could get to you. Um, but seven million dollars to me is a lot of money for a temporary means until we can get to you. Would we be better off if we kind of ex expedited our construction schedule and by putting up more money per phase? I think when you came to us the last time, it was a six-year process. Uh, with so much money every year. Could we increase that money per year and kind of condense that schedule and therefore would not need one?
So you you could. I mean, and the reason why is because if if you you had more money upfront, then you'd have the ability to have more crews and more equipment on on hand to get the work done, you know? So the the six-year schedule was based off of a a standard if you did a normal build, not a accelerated build. So you, but you could.
But my my follow-up question, my follow-up question to that is, I know you guys, um, are taking on a lot of territory in Virginia, which is great. But you are working with a lot of other localities too. I mean, do you have the capacity and resources to expedite that schedule?
So so part of the, you know, part of the deal that we would need to do is you would have to say, this is, this is the funds mechanism that we're looking at, right? And allow us to go back to our inside and outside engineering, because we have outside engineering sources. We also have outside contractors and stuff. So we, when I say we have two hundred and twenty employees, that's our business. Doesn't mean that those two hundred and twenty employees are necessarily all we're using to build out the fiber networks, right? So we're we're subcontracting out that work through outside engineering firms and everything else. So what would happen is you would have to say, okay, this is the funding mechanism that we feel comfortable that we can do. And then we would go back to engineering saying, based off of this funding mechanism, how many additional crews can we get? How quickly can we expedite the build? And then we would come back to you and say, all right, with that funding mechanism, we can cut a year, two-year, whatever off of this possible build.
If we can establish a budget and then take that budget and back it into a timeframe that engineering tells us is copable, is doable. And I'll give you an analogy. It takes a woman about nine months to have a baby. But you can put, you can bring nine women to help that woman and she's still going to have to have nine months to make that baby be delivered, okay?
Don't look at me, Brendan. I don't have to.
So so it doesn't matter how many people you throw at it, you still have to order equipment. It has to be delivered. And you have to physically plow that network in the ground, okay? So we could probably cut twelve to twenty-four months off the build cycle if the cash is there to expedite the project.
So let's just look at it from the backbone. At a hundred percent take rate, it's three and a half million dollars. When you guys were here last time, I believe I remember you saying that it would be three years before the first customer hookup. Does that sound correct?
That is correct.
So if you got a check today for three and a half million dollars, how long would it take you to build that backbone?
It would still take us at least three years to get the backbone lit. The key components of the backbone is all of the electronics that are the brains of the network. And that part does take time to to get in, constructed, built, and ready to serve even the first customer. But after that, and while that's happening, construction crews can be plowing fiber in all the zones and areas to help expedite the process. So that when that equipment comes live, it's sitting there ready to be connected to. So that's in theory how a project like this would work.
So the backbone taking three years, throwing more money at it, isn't going to make it happen faster?
Not necessarily, but you.
But you could be building out the rest of the network so you have a more than just the backbone done in three years.
That's an adequate statement.
And the engineering plan that you guys built up for us, we could take that to another company and get their estimate on what it would cost from, based on the the data that you provide. They'd be able to take a look at that and plug their numbers in and and make a determination of cost as well.
Yeah. So our our engineering design is based off of the USDA standards. And so it it, um, you can take, in the design, you'll have spreadsheets that show you the actual parts and how many of each of those parts you would need based off our design. And there's also a section that shows you the the model number, the location where you can purchase it and the manufacturer's number. So that it's not like, oh, they they told me I needed a thousand widgets, but I don't know what a widget is. It it tells you exactly. You need a thousand of these. Here's what it is. Here's the manufacturer part number. Here's a vendor for it and here's the vendor number.
And you guys are done with that? You're ready to put that on the table now?
I think it's it's in the final draft, yes.
That's correct.
Yeah.
How how long until you deliver a book or a chip or a thumb drive?
Well, uh, I I doubt I can speak to Vaughn is the one.
Yeah, it's it's on, it's in draft form now, so we're probably looking at maybe two weeks, two to three weeks. And we have it in print bound copy for you to have.
Well, I would say, I would say we could have the the electronic sooner. It takes two weeks for the printers, but we could, you know. Yeah, it takes me two weeks and months to get the printers.
So within the next two weeks, you guys would be able?
Have you the electronic format, yep.
Okay.
And then we, again, again, we can come back with the bound copies and go through the details. Or what, some counties, you you have the electronic format, go through it, and then we can set up a follow-up to have a sit down and go through the the plan. But again, the plan is going to show you, it's going to have this information. It will have additional maps, snapshots of each maps. You will have the, a version for Google Earth as well as shape files that if you have GIS, you can upload it into your GIS system. You'll have spreadsheets showing you each of the parts by section, right? So this is how much it's going to be in this section versus this section versus this section. And then you will go in there and not only have the parts, but you'll have the part number, you'll have a vendor for that part, and you'll have the vendor number as well.
When you say you you would get started, like if we said, start tomorrow, and y'all start, I guess, bringing the fiber optic cable first, you wouldn't actually be installing equipment, the, or as you called it, the brains. You wouldn't do that right. That wouldn't be one of the first things you'd do.
So 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 say, say we were to say, all right, we want you to start this project. First things we would do is we would, we would go back to engineering and say, okay, we've got permission to start the project. And their first thing is going to be contact VDOT to get the permits and right of ways and get access to all the stuff, right? On top of that, they're going to possibly have to do the same thing we're doing in King and Queen, and they're going to have to get environmentals done. And so this is why when Greg says it takes three years, you've got to get all this work done upfront, all your, you know, Ts crossed and Is dotted, right? So all that work's going on. While that's going on, we're ordering equipment. We're working with the county to find a place where we can have what we call a lay yard, so we can bring all this equipment and stage it, right? That's one reason why if you pay more money upfront, it it's beneficial because right now there's shortages on materials. So what used to take six weeks to get, has anybody gone to the lumber store lately, right? What used to take six weeks to get is taking six months to get. So we want to preorder that equipment, get it staged, have all that ready to go, have all the permits done. Then we sign up contracts with contractors, the subcontractors. You would see a guy coming out, doing the little location stuff, marking the signs, and and and, you know, you're looking at it, well, that's one, two, three. It might be twelve months or more getting all that stuff before you see the first plow coming in to plow the stuff. But and that's why when we say it takes so much to get started, you have to get all that prep work done. But once you get that going and you get all the things lined up, then it's just a matter of getting more and more crews on there to execute the plan. So I, does that answer your question?
Sort of. But what I was getting at, it's like if you go to Best Buy and buy a computer.
Yeah.
By the time you get home, it's outdated.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, no.
That's what I was getting at. If you buy the equipment now, it's three years before the first person is hooked up.
Now, when we're talking to equipment, we're talking about the fiber, the interduct and all that other stuff. We would, what would happen is, so what would happen is, from the engineering design and based off of the guidance you give us, where are we building at? When we order that equipment, we actually have to know the optics, right? Because this is lasers, right? So I can't put a five-mile laser in for a one-mile shot. I'll burn it out. So I have to know that this equipment, when it's ordered, I need so many five mile laser modules and so many fourteen mile laser modules and so on and so forth. So all that stuff would get pre-done, ready to go. We would more than likely issue a PO to the manufacturer or their representative for that equipment and have it pre-ordered so that once we get to the phase that we're ready, then we would have them submit the stuff. So that we're not getting equipment that's sitting there for three years. Yeah, no, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Taylor, I I remember, I believe it's been a little over a year ago, our Congressman Rob Whitman was, is in charge of Rural America Act or something of getting funds to rural communities. And I read where in one, um, grant, uh, he received three hundred million, then another grant, seven hundred and thirty-two million. Is your group actively reaching out to these people to see if you can get some some of that appropriated money?
Yes. So for, um, for the CAF, we got thirty-two million. For ARDOF, we got forty-five million. From USDA, we went out and got a forty-eight million dollar loan. From VADI, we've received close to, uh, six million. So one of the things that we do is i- is when we work with counties is we work to help find areas that we can get funding. It's not something, I mean, let's face it, the reason why your county has issues with broadband is because there's not a business case for a for-profit company, right? Now, we're the for-profit division of a cooperative, which means we don't really report to anything but our owners. So we're not out here looking to get a return on our investment within the next twenty-four or thirty-six months. We're we're in it to get a return on our investment probably in the next ten years or more. So we do work with you on finding sources of additional outside support to help build this, these networks. And we're we're fairly successful at it. Oh, yeah. So give you an example of King and Queen. So in King and Queen, just over the river, right, um, from here, they have three thousand eight hundred and thirty-two locations, all right? They, their build, their total network build before connecting any homes, that's about eighteen million dollars, okay? When we went to CAF, they had CAF blocks. That was anything where there was less than ten-one service. We were able to secure about five million dollars in CAF from there. Right? So five million dollars from CAF, the the county would put up three point eight million dollars. And we went out to VADI to get the 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 balance. The first year from VADI, we were awarded just over two million, two million and twenty thousand dollars. This last cycle, we are awarded just under two million. And we have a letter from them saying that if the company that won the ARDOF blocks, we bid against another company for the ARDOF blocks, we didn't win them, so they did. But the 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 amount of money is so low that it looks like they're going to forfeit. And then if that if that company forfeits those blocks, then the county will get an additional two million dollars in funding. And that's going to make their whole project complete, and they paid out three point eight million dollars to do it.
How much was that total project?
It's just over eighteen million.
For King and Queen?
For King and Queen. They're only have three thousand eight hundred and thirty-two homes. They're, I mean.
Which still, that's still a pretty, still the square mileage is, you still got to run the same, I mean, fiber throughout the whole county.
I I want to say, um, their their mileage was, I I, off the top of my head, I'm thinking it's like maybe three to four hundred miles of fiber. Again, they're about eight miles wide at the widest point, and they're about seventy miles long.
The biggest difference is for their county is that they have census blocks that qualify for subsidies.
Yeah.
Whereas your county didn't have as many census blocks that qualified because of the mapping that we've already discussed.
I think I can speak for the board on this. You know, this board is committed to to providing broadband throughout the county. Mr. Taylor said a while ago, uh, we we just can't turn you, write you a check today and turn you loose because of the procurement process. But we're talking about spending real money, tax, I mean, it's taxpayers' money that we need to be responsible for. Is that going to hurt us if if we have twenty million dollars plus and trying to get some of these grants if we kick that much money into the into the project?
So I mean, one of the, one of the things that we're, um, we're looking at, uh, talking to you guys about is going after a VADI application, taking some money, uh, and putting it in a pool with us and possibly some other counties for a regional type application, going after fu- matching funding from the state. So we're hoping, whatever we put in and you put in, we would get at least that much back from the state to help reduce that cost, all right? Now, we're talking about ARDOF. We we know that we already have a a couple million dollars in federal funding that we can bring to the table for ARDOF to bring that down. So we're already looking at bringing you guys in some federal funding that we have. We're asked, we'll be recommending that you go into an application with us for state funding to bring that down as well. And then there's a possibility that we could go after when the new maps come out. If we haven't built fiber to those areas yet, we could actually go out after ARDOF two and get some funding that way. And there are other other mechanisms out there as well that are yet to be known. I mean, we all know that there's money coming down for ARPA, right? There's also this infrastructure plan. Fortunately, you guys have a plan in place that when this infrastructure money comes down, there's a possibility we could get some of the infrastructure money to put towards this as well. So, I mean, we're we're not thinking the county's got to crack that whole cost. We're bringing some money to the table. If you partner with us, we're going to help you go out and get other money from federal and state locally as well.
Just just to kind of crunch a number here, um, it looked like the last slide you put up that had the total build-out cost with a hundred percent take. I understand it's kind of crazy, but right at fifty million dollars. And if you took the no customer rate at that build-out, it's twenty-five million dollars. So you said that you guys pick up the tab from the line to the house. That's the twenty-five million dollar difference, right? So the total project that the county's looking at is twenty-five million dollars. We were going to have you come in and build out a system for us that doesn't drop to any homes. It would cost twenty-five million dollars. Is? Correct. And you guys are going to pick up the other twenty-five million dollars if we had a hundred percent take rate. So the two million dollars that you already get, is that coming off our twenty-five or yours?
So.
I mean, it's, I mean, I'd like to know when we get a grant, is it, is it our money or is it yours? Because, you know, we're going to be putting up a chunk of dough here. And I'd like to make sure that if we partner in a in a VADI grant on a regional basis or even just pursue one as New Kent County, that we're reducing our tab.
Right. And that's that's the way it works.
Okay.
Yeah. Because what, so the funding that we got, like for the ARDOF money that we got, that's to pass the home. That's the funding they they're providing us to pass the home. When we go to VADI, so when we go to VADI and we put in the VADI application, our application states that our send match is based off a thirty to forty percent take ratio based off of two thousand twenty-five hundred dollars per home. And this is how much match we're putting in. And the money that the county and the state's putting in is going in to build that cost, that, you know, the backbone cost or build out to these locations. So, yes.
So the grants that we would get would be
Going off.
Reducing our share.
Perfect example is that with King and Queen, because we had a plan in place and we were already in the in the process of implementing that plan. You remember when the CARES funding came down last year, you had to have the money spent before Christmas, right? We were able to spin up a portion of that plan and put in place about a nine hundred thousand dollar bill. Which guess what? That dropped down King and Queen's a portion because part of it's now been built up. I think they ended up, it was six hundred thousand dollars. So now instead of doing three point five, they're only looking at two point nine. So, yes.
I have a good question.
You always do.
So, um, when you do the backbone, who gets the fiber verse and what determines it?
Well, so with the backbone, I mean, we're looking at building the backbone. You know, the the people who could get the service would be those that live right off the backbone, you know?
Just that two hundred and sixteen or something.
Now, if you want to go to the next deal, and this is what this is what happened with King and Queen. So as we talked to them, there was a discussion, well, what, which of our blocks are going to get? blocks are gonna get service first? Alright? And it wasn't about a royal, but the, the Board of Supervisors said, look, we've had broadband over wireless for eight years, but my portion of the county wasn't able to participate in that because the signal didn't get down there. So it was decided at that time that that part of the county would be built out first because they didn't have, they had gone longer than anybody else without internet.
So fair and true.
So...
Well, it could be, it could be ultra.
So we look, we look, we, we, we look towards the county to give us some guidance while at the same time we look at engineering and say, what makes the most sense, right? What makes the most sense? Cause, you know, um, you know, one of the things we wanna do is, i- is we build it out, we, you know, we wanna get customers on there as soon as you do. Because as soon as we can get customers, then we start getting some return on that investment, your money and our money, we start getting a return on it.
Okay, and so, um, another question is, it was a, it was a, a timeframe put in place to get this complete plan. And I know you remember it, but I don't. But I know that we're past that timeframe. So my question becomes, if we can't get our plan in paper, what is our reassurance that the rest of the plan will be on time? I mean, there are chips somewhere we can't get, I already know that. I know how US mail is, I already know that.
Right.
But it becomes, how close are we gonna be to this three years?
So there, there was a six-month, there was a six-month thing on the plan. And, and the reason why it was delayed is there was two things. One is that we, we had ARDOF, right? And we wanted to put a pause, we did it on your plan and everybody else's plan because we said, wait a second, this is a major event. This could impact your plans moving forward. So when you look at your plan, there is a whole section that talks about ARDOF and how it impacted your county. So we had to wait for that to happen. Now, we're giving you the preliminary numbers, cause what I'm telling you is the preliminary numbers say this, but we don't know if Starry's gonna keep their blocks up. We don't know if SpaceX is gonna do what they're gonna do. I mean, the, the ARDOF, even though the auction's completed, it hasn't been finalized yet, right? The, the FCC has to stamp the papers and say, this is the final result. So that was one of the delays, was that. The other delay was when we went back and, and we did the wireless, and the wireless engineers came back and said, this is what we have, and we can serve sixty-nine percent. We told them, that's not good enough. We're not gonna go to the county and say, you're gonna spend X million dollars and you're only gonna be able to feed sixty-nine percent. What else can we do? And so we forced them to go back and re-engineer it to, to saturation and give us an option to where we could feed more things. Now, they came back and said, well, we can saturate it, we can get to this level, and we can do un- unstandard installs to get to that level. We were just trying to make sure that what we gave you was a thorough plan so that you guys had something that you could work off of.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll, I'll add to that, that if you build a house, if you build a blueprint, there are gonna be customary expectations of delays that come along with building a house, the things that are outside of the control of building a house. A good contractor is gonna stay in constant communications with you
Yeah.
and help you understand at every turn what's happening, when it's happening, why it's happening. And that's what we expect that River Street will provide you through, through such a process.
I'm sorry, Mr.?
No.
I'm, I'm just curious also, um, if the money that we provide and the money that essentially flows through us is, is granted to New Kent and transferred to you guys to build out this network, who owns it?
So, right now, we own it, right? But we have the, the, we have a revenue share that we normally extend to the county. So that's what they, but it, part of it, like in VADI, a- and I don't know if they've changed, they haven't changed the rules yet, but the federal grant requires that we own it. The state grants also currently require that we own it. And the reason why is because they want, they don't want the counties having to deal with the over, the preoccurring maintenance and everything. So here's the deal, we put the fiber in, we put the electronics in, like he was saying, three years, it's, it's out of date? Well, yeah, it's sometime or another, you're gonna have to put more money in to update that equipment. Somebody comes in, cuts the fiber, you have to send by somebody out there to repair it. The state and the federal government doesn't want the local jurisdictions to have this ongoing maintenance costs and everything else. They expect the, the company, uh, who runs it to, you know, owns it and operates it. So we would own it, but we would deal a revenue share with you all to, to return your investment.
And is that revenue share fixed or is that negotiable?
It is a fixed, it is a fixed rate that we have established. And we would go into that discussion with you further at a later date.
It's my understanding too, Mr. Hathaway, that, uh, the VADI grants now, they do want you to have a provider along with the county for the, for the applications. That, they look on that a lot, you know, a lot more favorable.
Yes, and, uh, actually, that, that, that's a requirement. A locality can, unless they changed it recently, can apply for a VADI grant by itself. Uh, you, we have to have a partner.
But that partner could be a, a, an authority if they've been in business long enough?
It, it could be an authority. I do think there is a requirement that they have to be in operation for a certain period of time. I, I don't remember what that length of time is.
I think it's two years.
Two years, okay.
Anybody else have any? Ms. Page?
I just got one more. So, so my one more is, um, everybody wants to work with New Kent. So suppose, um, other, other adjoining localities wanted to do a regional broadband. Um, I don't wanna say authority, but wanted to join in. Would it, what it, I don't wanna say what is the benefit, but is that possible?
So...
Or no?
So, first of all, you know, um, two things. One is, we are looking at a regional type application for the VADI, okay? Um, two is, we have tried in the past through King and Queen County to work with neighboring counties to try to do a regional type broadband deployment. And we have not gotten one taker. I mean, yeah, it, I guess, I, 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 so, I, I'm just, I'm just letting you know, we're, we're, we're open, we're open to that, right? We're open to that. Um, I mean, we're doing a regional application right now, a wireless application that was funded through the Tobacco Commission in Amiian and Dinwiddie Counties. I mean, we're, we're open to that. But it, what ends up happening is that each county has their own personalities and their own li- needs and everything. And, and you get a lot of people in the same room and, and nobody can come to any type of agreement. And so that's what King and Queen ran into, and they just end up saying, we're just gonna do it on our own. But, I mean, if, if you could bring them to the table and they're willing to work in, in a true partnership, we're willing to work with them as well.
That tobacco money, I wish we could get that. That's nice. Takes me off every time I hear that. Do it anyway.
Well, that's changing. It is changing, right? Cause that could, it's no longer grants some more loans nowadays, so.
Alright, well, uh, Mr. stairs?
I, Mr. Taylor, I did have one question. A few minutes ago, you listed all the, uh, grants and the, the funds that you received from the federal government, I guess through COVID, CARES Act, all that stuff, right?
So CARES, the CARES money came through, um, the King and Queen County and through the Rappahannock Indian Tribe. They, they...
Right.
Um, in addition to that, we've got, um, we've had a, the CAF, which was Connect America Fund from the FCC. We had ARDOF, which is Rural Digital Opportunity Fund.
Did that go to your company?
So the CAF and ARDOF go to us.
Right.
Okay? The other funding comes through the, the local jurisdiction. Like, so like on the VADI money, that goes through the county, and then the county, we invoice the county, and the county pays us out of whatever bucket they're paying outside of it that we, we don't keep track of that.
So the funds you received, your company, what did you do with the money?
So that funds that, first of all, the ARDOF money has not been released yet. We are getting CAF funds, but the CAF funds are being put into a special account that is good, just used for the build. Those, you, you, you know, we have federal guidelines, we have to fill.
Some of that money could be used with different localities to help expedite the program?
Yeah, so on, on that federal funding, it's earmarked for those locations, right? I can't, so I can't take CAF money and build it out in a, a non-CAF area. I've gotta build it out only in CAF areas. Same thing with ARDOF. I get ARDOF money, I can only use that ARDOF money to build it out in ARDOF areas, so.
But we, in the case of the CARES money in King and Queen, as Rob was alluding to earlier, because we already had an engineering plan, we were able to look at a segment in the county where the Rappahannock Indian Tribe was getting CARES funds and expedite that build, much like we've talked about expediting a New Kent build. We were able to expedite it. So those CARES dollars went straight to that project to expedite it, and it was deducted from King and Queen County's portion.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, also, Mr. Chairman, uh, if, if it's okay, I just wanted to recognize that the Honorable Bill Cota, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors from Charles City, is here today.
Vice Chairman.
Vice Chairman. It's only three of them, so he's gotta pick one up. Um, but he's here. He might be interested in talking to you guys at a later date too. Thank you.
And if I'm, just one more, I promise. The CAF and ARDOF money is use it or lose it, right? So y- you've been awarded that money, but if you don't build it out, we don't get it, nobody else gets it, unless somebody else steps up to utilize it.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's use it or give it back and pay a penalty.
Hit the wrong button. Do, uh, anybody else have anything? I just, uh, I guess what our next steps would be, I mean, we're gonna have this back in a couple weeks. I guess staff could be working on a RFP, in case we don't get any, you know, if we're getting anything. So when we get everything, we, we can keep moving forward. Is that, is that a desire of the board? Alright. Alright, thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And we can come back, and we can come back, and we can come back.
We need to, we need to move, we need to, come back and go, we need to roll. Can we have a five-minute break? We're gonna take a break, but you, you, yeah, but you can come up if you want. I mean, we're doing a break. Alright. Uh-huh. Take a five-minute break.
I'm starting taking questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Before you is a request for a budget transfer to pay out accrued compensation time that's currently on our books for all employees. The current amount of that payout would be eighty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-two cents. And we're asking that that money be transferred from our reserve fund, our contingency fund. During the 2021 General Assembly session, the Virginia General Assembly approved the Virginia Overtime Wage Act of 2021. With that overtime wage act, it restricts our ability to continue our policy of providing comp time to employees in lieu of providing over, in lieu of paying overtime. That ability goes away, so, and therefore, we have a significant balance of overtime, comp time on our books. The problem with this comp time balance is, as people separate from us, leave, we have to pay it out because it is earned time, and we have to pay it out at the rate that they're currently making. So the longer we ha- hold on to this amount, that number grows. In fact, and it's the reason that I'm coming for, before you today and not in July, as of July 1, when the 4% salary increases kick in and the additional salary increases for our public safety employees kick in, well, that comp time balance amount is gonna grow also. So, therefore, I am requesting a transfer from our contingency fund to pay out existing comp time. And we will no longer allow employees to accrue comp time per the new regulations.
Are they gonna change that regulation in the next General Assembly, back to where it was?
I think there is a good chance, because to me, really, the way this whole ordinance transpired, it really appears that this was an unintended consequence. The original bill that was submitted had a lot of exemptions in it, and one of those exemptions were comp time. But by the time it got adopted, a huge section of that bill was removed. And I'm not sure that the General Assembly fully understood the impact of that to localities and businesses.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add, too, that there is a lack of complete consensus on what this bill actually does to the requirements for comp time. Several local government attorneys have differing opinions on whether this eliminates comp time. The Department of Labor's position appears to be that it does. And I think this approach is the conservative approach. I do think your point about whether they'll change that is a good point. There is probably going to be a special session in August, and I anticipate this will come up, so.
What happens if localities do not pay out the comp time like we're doing, and it switches back?
What happens if they don't pay it out?
Is every locality paying out comp time? Is that what, is that's happened throughout the Commonwealth?
I, I'm not aware of anybody, I don't know if anybody else is doing this. I think most people are stopping, those who are taking the conservative approach are probably not after July 1 going to be paying overtime, the requirements of the FLSA overtime in comp time. They're gonna be paying those in cash until this issue is resolved. There are some localities that I think are, are still waiting to see whether the Attorney General chimes in or whether the Governor chimes in on, officially, on whether their position is that comp time is going away. But I think Rod, from Rodney's perspective, I think the paying out of this comp time that he's asking for, it really has less to do with the law necessarily, but the increases. Yeah, that you guys gave. So whoever has an hour of leave before July 1, it's worth X amount, but it'll be 4% more at the minimum after July. So it's up to you whether you wanna pay out that old, uh, comp time. The, the new rule would, again, if, if, if that interpretation is what stands and the General Assembly ends up confirming that comp time is prohibited, we would not be able to pay any, except law enforcement and firefighters, comp time. There's a, there still is an exception for those groups. But the General Assembly may say, we, the bill wasn't intended to do away with comp time at all. So, we'll just have to see how that shakes out.
Most, most localities that I've consulted with in the Richmond region have decided to go the route that we're going with just eliminating the comp time. And a lot of that is because of the opinion that recently came out, actually. That's why this appears to be kind of rushed and hurried. It's because it is, we haven't too long got the opinion from the state.
Think, were you getting at the point that if we didn't do it, and it changed back in August, we wouldn't have to do it? Is that what you were getting at?
Mr. Chairman? It's, it's still a liability.
Yeah.
Well, is it a liability of time or money? Because, I mean, if, if there's comp time on the books currently, then the employees that have that comp time available to them can still take the comp time, not necessarily be paid out in cash, is that correct? They just, we just can't continue it going forward, so we can't add any additional comp time. Is that, am I reading it correctly?
We have taken the route, or we're proposing to just eliminate all comp time from our books. It's a liability, an additional accounting that we have to do each year. And we've noticed, especially on the law enforcement side, we have employees that can barely utilize their annual leave. Each year, I'm having to carry over annual leave, so therefore, they don't get the opportunity to ever use any of this comp time, and it's just building and building and building, which is really, I mean, to me, eighty thousand dollars is a significant. For an annual leave. Well, we did that for annual leave, because they can't take time. And if they can't take annual leave, then they can't take this either. Yeah. It would definitely make our audits a lot cleaner, our books a lot cleaner, and I do think there's some savings in that, too.
Are we gonna be creating a situation there where we're gonna be looking at budgeting additional overtime? I mean, obviously, we're gonna be paying for it one way or the other, either in comp time or, you know, overtime wages, so.
That, that is the real concern that I have with the whole Virginia Overtime Wage Act. I do believe it is gonna impact our overtime. I've communicated to directors and managers the need to manage their staff's time appropriately. You know, allow some flex hours when possible, meaning that if a staff member has a night meeting, one night, then let that person come in a couple hours later the next day or sometime within that week, so that at the end of the week, staff does not go above 40 hours.
And this, this, this is hourly or salary people that we're talking about, or does it matter?
It, it's, it's, it doesn't pertain to salary people, it is hourly people, yes. Well, let me take that back, let me take that.
Right, I know.
It does not pertain to exempt employees. This pertains to non-exempt employees, which are those employees that can get paid overtime.
And the eighty thousand dollars that we're talking about, is that an accrual of a year's time? Or are we talking multiple years? I mean, the.
Multiple years, decades of time that's on our books right now.
Okay, then I think maybe we should just clear the books. Let's get this over with y'all. Or either that, y'all need to take some time off.
So is that a motion here, Mr. Lockwood? Is that you getting ready to?
Mr. Chairman, I approve the budget.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the budget transfers to pay out accrued compensation time as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood, is there any discussion? If none, Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please.
Mr. Tiller.
Aye.
Ms. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Stairs.
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood.
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn.
Aye. Any other, anybody else? Board members having other business comments? Mr. Stairs?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this is a good time, but I just wanna ask with the county attorney, what is the progress on our new light ordinance that's being worked on?
I've sent a, some new legislation on clutter to Mr. Stotter that would allow the, the county to prohibit clutter, which is another vehicle to help clean up. I think that was last week or 10 days ago, so he's got that, and he said he was gonna review that, and then we're gonna touch base on, on whether he wants to bring anything before you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Motion for adjournment? Mr. Tiller, Ms. Watkins, poll the members?
Ms. Page.
Aye.
Mr. Stairs.
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood.
Aye.
Mr. Tiller.
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn.
Aye. Adjourned.